Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. We will now begin our open study session. This is for proposed ordinance H-19-06, smoking lounges. If I like to begin?
We have that ordinance here with us, do we not?
Yes.
Correct.
11A.
What is it?
11A.
11A. Let me, I'm gonna just get that out, but I particularly have read this over multiple times, and I don't see anything wrong with it personally, but that's my opinion, and I just wish tobacco would go away completely myself, but that's my opinion.
What are we attempting to do? All hookah lounges, or just the ones, the new ones, or can you give us a little background on the thought?
If you read it, Mayor, it spells out everything in here. I don't know if you got a chance to read it. It's an ordinance to basically enforce what we have currently, and also impose at the end, you know, we had the penalties, so I don't know what.
And it's still, I believe it's still limiting-
It's prohibiting minors and just the jungle stuff.
And limiting the amount of hookah lounges in the, in the city, correct? Am I saying that?
Yeah.
Just basically putting in everything in writing that wasn't-
I know Dearborn's had plenty of trouble with some hookah lounges in their city.
Many, many cities. I've been researching for, for almost two years. There's nothing, but if we don't have an ordinance, you're gonna have issues, and as of right now, we don't have an ordinance in place.
Yeah, we're just trying to be proactive on this instead of reactive when we run into problems, trying to play catch-up and come up with some kind of guidelines.
Or come back and say, "This been grandfathered in."
Well, if you want to get rid of them, why would you not-
I didn't say get rid of them, Mayor. It doesn't say nothing in here. What does it say there? Can you point out where it says get rid of them?
It says to limit the number of-
Yeah, the seven.
Yeah, but I'm saying that, that creates a monopoly. It's, yes, it is. It's anti-American.
No, what we need first is we need to put the ordinance, and we see where we're at. If we need to add more, I mean, you know, anybody else, you can always come back and change it, add or delete. Right now, with currently what we have, we have to make sure that it's acceptable by the ordinance. If we need to add more, we can add more later, but-
Councilman Abdallah?
Okay, I had some, I've gone through this probably about 80 times already, so I do have some, a whole bunch of questions to be answered. So, the first thing is, this kind of statement that I want to make is, hookah lounges, hookahs in general, are used by people, a lot of people in the Arab-American community, and they're used, instead of a lot of times, instead of bars, because that's what they so choose, and that's fine, you know? I mean, to each his own, whatever, they enjoy it, that's fine with me, no problem there. But that's the primary reason a lot of people go there, is to go ahead and sit around, and then they choose to smoke hookahs and enjoy them. I, for one, enjoy them, and matter of fact, just enjoyed one just before you tonight, it's the Blue Moon Hookah. But a couple of questions that I have. The existing ones that are there, do they have to reapply? I mean, I've read this, and I just want to make sure, the first question's on the cap, does that apply whatsoever to any of the existing ones? And I just want to make sure that it does not.
It does not apply. It basically just, I mean, this is an ordinance. I mean, if they violate, then yeah, it applies, but if they don't, then they don't apply. They don't have to reapply for license since they're existing.
Okay, perfect.
And that's why it says, you know, keep the current seven.
Perfect. The second thing is, on the cap, I just want to get it clarified, because it's a little bit of a vague language, I just want to make sure clarified. Retail stores, is that included in, in the cap on the number that can be around? I'm talking about retail stores where they, you're not allowed to come in and smoke, but you can come in and purchase a product and walk away and smoke it in your own house or wherever you choose. Are those limited? Because currently, in our city, there's obviously, you know, a lot of people choose to open up those types of businesses, and that's, you know, that's their prerogative, and if they don't survive, then, you know, they don't have a good product, obviously. But if they survive, good for them. But when, obviously, I was encouraged as much business as possible in the city. So I just want to be sure that in this, and this is where I would look for our council, Gary Miyatki, is just to make sure that specifically retail stores, that there's no limit on this in this ordinance.
I did not see that, the cap appears-
Right, the cap is on the lounges, but I just want to make sure we're clear on that, so that there's no discrepancy down the line.
Well, I haven't necessarily looked at that specific issue, but I did not see a cap with regard to that.
This would be, I mean, obviously, I'm speaking on behalf of myself. This would be something that I think would, would not need any type of limit, just in my opinion, because it's a store where somebody can walk in, buy a product, walk out.
You know, I'm reading this, and it, everywhere it references smoking lounge, not stores that's sala.
So just wanted to make sure we're there.
Yeah, I think this is specifically for smoking lounges only, because everything says smoking lounge, nothing like, you know-
The next item, there's currently, that I've counted, currently open, six hookah lounges currently open, unless I'm mistaken.
There's one in the process of opening at Telegraph and Ford Road, and I was gonna point that out, because I don't want to get in a long legal battle, because they've, they're pretty far along in their efforts. I don't know how close they are to being done.
Very close. Okay, so-
Yeah, but hold on one second. We've had the moratorium a while back for 180 days, so I don't know why there's one being built, and we had the moratorium in place.
They were approved back in November of '17. Well, they started the process-
Well, we need to see that, because we haven't, you know, I've called many times, talked to the city, and there was no mention of it when I put the moratorium in place a few months ago.
You didn't call me?
Well, I talked to a few people. I don't want to get into who I talked to, but I talked to somebody in the building department, and I've talked to somebody, I've talked to the city clerk-
I'm in charge of the building department, and that's been in process really since-
As a hookah lounge, there was no license issued by the clerk for hookah license.
No, but he has a CFO to build out a hookah lounge.
Well, we need to see that.
Is that, is that the one traveling on Ford Road, heading east past Telegraph on the left-hand side by the gas station?
Yes, vehicle show.
So on that one, okay, on that one, as far as what I counted, I'm not counting that one. So the best of my knowledge, there's only six currently open.
No, there's seven. Currently, we have seven. We have the Four Seasons Hookah, Blue Moon Hookah, Cigar and Cigarette Shop, Royalty Nights, the Lava One, Lava Two, and Wave Hookah Lounge. Those are the seven that-
And Royalty. Okay, which one's the cigar and hookah? Which one's that lounge? I don't know where that's at.
They have a license.
They, they serve somebody where somebody can smoke? I'm not aware of it, so unless you know where it's at, I'm not aware of it personally.
Did the address, I'm not even familiar-
There's a place, I think they sell cigars and hookahs, products on Cherry Hill-
Yes.
Between Inkster and-
John Daley.
John Daley or Ambroys.
Right by the bank.
By the, yeah, by the 7-Eleven there, but as far as I know, they don't serve where you can sit down. So the best of my knowledge, there's six. I just wanted to clarify.
So they're not a smoking lounge, okay.
I don't know. I bought a cigar there one time, but I don't know much. But the other, the other comment I want to make, my personal preference, if we're gonna put any type of limit, zip code should be considered, because in the 48127 area is where we have currently, again, based on my personal account, there's six of them. And other zip codes, to the best of my knowledge, and unless somebody from the administration can tell me otherwise, there's none open. So to me, if somebody wants to open one hypothetically on Van Born, on Telegraph and Van Born, on Carlisle, well, you know, give or take in both that particular area, I don't think that's something that would have an issue with the area 48127. So that's something I wanted to address. Next issue that I want to address, for a lot of Muslim-Americans during Ramadan, and a lot of hookah lounges during Ramadan, this is specifically during Ramadan, and I know they had that particular issue in Dearborn, a lot of them are allowed, and which is very common, for people to go break their fast and stay up until they could, they could eat, all the way up to 4:00 AM or 4:30 AM. So a lot of them do open that late. I personally have, would like, A, to see that in there as an exception on the time, and B, I personally have no problem when there's an establishment like Lava or Blue Moon or whatever, that at 3:30, 4:00 AM, you know, inside the place, or just wherever, just not causing any type of commotion. I personally would not want that excluded. I think people should have a right to be able to use that if they so choose during Ramadan nights, and that's what Dearborn did, I know also. So that's something I'd like to address. Next issue, I wrote down in my notes, outside. In this ordinance, it says that at midnight, it's gotta shut down. I totally respect residents, obviously. You don't want to have any type of impact on, you know, a house that's near there. But from the six that I counted, there's no place where any residents are affected if somebody's sitting outside at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. A lot of them do close at 2:00. Some do open up past 2:00 AM, maybe 3:00 AM. I don't know. I don't know the exact hours. But to me, I don't believe government, as a government, we have a right to say to them, you know what, if somebody's sitting outside, they cannot be outside after midnight, because if you look at, for example, some of the bars, where people are not allowed to smoke inside, and one comes to mind, you know, I don't want to name the specific place to be fair, but people can go outside and have a drink and smoke cigarettes, which is fine by me. I have no problem with that.
They can't take the drink outside.
I'm sorry?
They can't take the drink outside.
Okay, I don't know about the drinks. I don't drink personally, so I don't know. But you can walk outside onto the patio, I know of a particular establishment, I don't want to name it, because it's not about them, but where they can come out, Councilman Ray, and smoke a cigarette.
Yes, oh, you're correct.
At 1:00 in the morning and 2:00 in the morning, correct? While the bar is still open. So with that being the case, then you should not exclude hookah lounges from being able, like one that comes, that comes to mind, for example, Lava or Blue Moon have outside patios, beautiful outside patios, very professionally run, and people do sit outside at 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. I'm usually not out at that time, but every once in a while, I've been there a little bit later, you know, when I'm out with friends. There's no trouble. People sit outside 1:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning. If there's problems, I mean, the police department there, I'm sure they'd be the first, the chief would be the first to tell us if there has any problems. I would have to do it. So to me, the 12:00 AM rule should definitely be struck out, in my opinion. And then I've got two more concerns, which I've kind of addressed. This is on item number, on page 9, 8-76. Again, back to, why 2:00 AM? The 2:00 AM rule applies to liquor. That's a state law. I don't dictate that. But if somebody's sitting around smoking a cigarette hypothetically at a bar or wherever, if there's no liquor, presuming no liquor here, if somebody's sitting and smoking a cigarette at any establishment, hypothetically a restaurant, let's say a restaurant wants to stay open until 3:00 in the morning, they could open 24 hours. So same thing for hookah lounges. They want to open until 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning, chance is how there may be no business then, but I feel it's their choice. We as a government should not dictate to them that they should close by 2:00 AM. If they have patrons there, and they're doing business, and I've spoken with a couple of different hookah lounges, and they have business that way sometimes, especially on the weekends, which is very common for people to stay out that late, we shouldn't shut them down at 12 o'clock, because we want to encourage business there, not discourage business. So to me, they also should be, I'm in favor personally of striking it down. And lastly, on item 8-78 on page 9, on there, there's a condition which says, "A smoking lounge," now, I want to preface that with, I'm okay with smoking lounges, anything that's not good for kids, to not have anything that's not good for kids near a school. I get that, when it's very close. But in this case, it says, "A smoking lounge may not be located within 1,000 feet," which is .18 miles, "from any school, church, or park." In this particular case, and I just want to make sure I clarify, for one open establishment that we currently have open, which is a very professional place, Blue Moon Hookah, I don't know, I didn't measure it, you know, with measuring tape, but I believe Star Academy's within, what is it, two and a half blocks from there, maybe 100 yards, maybe 200 yards?
Yeah, and you got the mosque right next to Lava Lounge.
And then you got the-
Wow.
That's the one I was gonna mention.
And the other, the other one is-
Doesn't talk about the eight though.
The church. We're talking about, we're talking about the eight.
This is new establishments, not the eight that are already in business.
We said we're not doing anything to the eight.
Okay, and that's, again, I just want to clarify that, because we have somebody-
That's my problem with the seven. Yeah, I'm sorry, seven.
If we have somebody that spent, you know, I know Blue Moon, I know Lava, we do Lava, they've spent a lot of money in our city, they bring in a lot of taxes into our city, we have a lot of residents that enjoy it, you know, because of the mosque on Ford Road, if possibly that's what's intended, then Lava would have to close, or Blue Moon would have to close.
No, we just said the seven. I don't know how, we keep going back and forth. It says, "We're not doing anything with the seven. The seven will stay."
So they're staying.
I'm not saying we're closing anybody down. I don't know why you guys keep going back to this.
But that's violation of antitrust and competition. If a new person wants to come into place and spend a million dollars, why would we not allow them in?
Well, then it goes in front of the council. It goes in front of the council. Like, we don't want, we don't want to go back, we have to-
Councilor, Madam Chair. Doesn't Dearborn have an ordinance similar to this?
Most cities do right now, because they've had-
They have it at 15.
They have it at 15.
How many do they currently have, do you know?
I don't know the exact number, but I do know they have it at 15.
Okay, so they're, they're limiting the amount themselves. They're physically a larger city than we are, okay? So they are limiting, they've already done it. Other cities have already done it. So that kind of washes out the fact that we're doing something illegal. And I agree with some of the things that Councilman Abdallah said about the time limits, as far as, you know, especially during-
Ramadan.
Ramadan, I guess, because that's who usually basically is using these, these hookah bars. I don't smoke, but I've visited them, you know, meet people, talk, I have a soft drink or a good cup of Arabic coffee, which is fabulous, or tea, but-
You'll be open before.
Yeah, and, and I don't see anything wrong with them opening up at that time, as long as they're away from, you know, like they are now, where there's no residential areas. Like, you know, right now, I don't think we have any that are in residential areas. I mean, we have bars right on the corner of residential areas, and you're correct, people go out there and smoke. You know, it could be disturbing to some people in the neighborhood. I see that.
There are some that are near residential areas, but everything I know, I've never heard of any trouble. Look, let me make something clear. The current ones we have in our city, and this has, that point had to be made clear. The current ones we have in our city, I personally have never heard of any type of troublemaking, nah, there may be an occasional one incident every year or two, who knows? But there's definitely been, and I think Chief Walter Torni, if you don't mind, I mean, other than, you know, every once in a while, you know, a year or two, who knows, an incident, but you've never had issues with the current establishments in our city. Is that correct? Because I don't want to, I don't want to give to, and I know that's not-
And again, we're not, we're, we are not talking about the seven that we currently have.
I know, but I'm just making it clear.
We're not, we want to make sure that there's no issues to the residents by adding any more right now, till we assess, see what we're at, and if there's, if there's any addition that needs to be added, then it has to go in front of the council at a later date. And, and you know, like I said earlier, I have researched many cities, and even out-of-state lounges. We do, we do need an ordinance, like I said, for the residents, you know, I'm in favor of businesses, but I'm also, we need to look out for our residents, and we do have to have an ordinance, because the last thing we need is somebody coming in, and there's issues, and we've heard that from the administration, hey, this was grandfathered in. We need an ordinance, you know, for, for this. Otherwise, we're gonna follow the same suits as other cities, that we have to, instead of being proactive, now we have to go back and see what we can do to fix that issue.
Council Chair.
Councilman Wenzel.
Is it, is it, is it address the fact if they sell it, does it, do they get to keep the license? Say if, you know, someone owns one, and they sell it to another person, or does that person have to go on a, how's that work? You could just sell that establishment?
They would have to go to the state.
Yeah, similar to a liquor license.
So I mean, then they would open it up? Open one up, a spot up, or?
They would have to go to the state to, if somebody needs to transfer their license.
I don't know. I didn't read it.
So when they're up for license renewal, they automatically get their chance to stay open, then, be one of the seven or whatever number we come up with, right?
But it can be sold.
Okay, well-
I mean, the license can be sold.
That, Councilman Conston?
Number one, what do we say to an investor? Let's say, for example, the gentleman who developed the old Kentucky Fried Chicken into the Blue Moon, or someone who wants to turn a bar into a hookah lounge that doesn't serve alcohol. This whole area is governed by state law and the smoking ban, and if we give a monopoly to certain existing hookah lounges, that can be struck down, it can be spot zoning and showing favoritism. The, for them to come before the council, the council's taken out of most land use decisions, and that's granted to the Planning Commission or the ZBA by law. The council doesn't make, okay, this business can be here, this business can't. I just, I don't see a need for it at all. When you say to protect the public, I can think of uses a lot worse than an entrepreneur opening up a business and serving food and having the agili tobacco.
But Councilman, as we stated before, other cities have put a limit on it, legally put a limit on it.
There's a need for it at this stage in time.
I mean, so we can't use that as an argument, because-
The only, the only city I would be aware of is Dearborn.
No, there's, there's many others. I can, I can bring you a list next meeting. There's at least, at least ten.
And I agree with, if, so like the restaurant across the street from my office, it, it's open during Ramadan till 3, 4:00 in the morning, because, and it doesn't really open up until the sun goes down and the break of the fete.
Correct.
That shouldn't be restricted.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Do they?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to, for clarification.
The one across from his office?
No.
On Ford Road, the Coney Island?
It's a, it's a-
It's a Red Stardust Lounge.
Not a hookah lounge.
It's not a hookah lounge.
Do you want the police chief to respond to Councilman Abdallah's question?
The only complaint that I can recall over the last couple of years is about a current hookah lounge that is open, and it's from a neighboring city, the person lives across the street, and they talk about the activity in the evenings. As far as specific incidents at each place, whether it's a hookah lounge or a bar, I would have to do it and research each call for service to those locations. I'm not anticipating any huge problems from the hookah lounges or the bars that we have currently, so I'm not sure what kind of, did I answer your question?
Well, I, the statement I was making is, the current hookah lounges that we have in our city, in general, now, look, you know, I work in a real estate office. You've been called to a real estate office every once in a while, whether they have a closing, they'll have a argument or fight. So I mean, it happens in any business. You've probably been called to churches, to mosques, to, you know, synagogues. I mean, it could happen anywhere. But in general, overall, the current businesses we have in our city have been law-abiding citizens that have done well, haven't caused any problems for everybody, and they're just running a business, and we're earning a tax base on that, and I'm all for that. So I just want to make sure that we don't penalize in any way, shape, or form in this ordinance, and that's why I made these nine statements.
We've already stated that several times, it doesn't.
Okay.
In fact, the current ones at all, that's, that's a-
I know, but-
Point that's been already been made several times here.
But the reason I'm making this point, because when we sometimes say we want to protect the residents, and there's been cities that have had problems, that implies that, or, I'm sorry, I don't want to say implies, because I want to be clear, that could be construed, that there's current problems in the ones that we have here, and I'm just making a statement, that ones we have here have had no more different problems than any other city, or any other business, actually.
And you know what? I think we have seven, what, seven good ones, and I guess we're afraid of the trend that the bad ones are coming behind them, and that's, it seems to be a trend in different cities, and so that's why we're just trying to protect what we have and keep them here.
Doesn't make any sense.
Since we've not had any problems with them.
Well, some, some other cities where, and I'm very familiar with the situation, because I've read up a lot on this over the years, just out of just personal interest, not that I'm opening that type of business in that type of interest, but, but you know, the problem started in certain cities when those types of businesses were unfortunately not as successful, and they took the route of, you know what, let's start leasing it out to private parties, and that's where the problems start coming in, when liquor started coming in, and, and look, if, if there's a bar that serves liquor, I have no problem with it. That's fine, because they're regulated by the state, they're licensed by the state, no problem whatsoever. But if there's any type of liquor in any of the hookah lounges, absolutely not, that's not okay by me, because that's against the state law, and that's where you start running into problems. And establishments, establishments we currently have in our city, I've personally frequented them all, and there's been no problem, and that's the only reason I want to make that statement, because I didn't want to, you know, tarnish their image based on what possibly happened in other cities where they leased out those facilities to totally private parties from outside areas.
Thank you, Councilman.
Does this ordinance, I mean, I didn't see it in there, stop that type of business going on as far as renting them out and doing stuff of that nature? I mean, it should have some sort of ordinance. What kind of ordinance, I'm not, I'm not arguing. I do know that there was some heavy-duty problems at the hookah lounge at Dearborn that used to have Kerners at one time, that had all sorts of issues there, and I'm, if I'm willing to be a betting man, I'm willing to bet that's what Mr. Councilman Bazey is trying to avoid at this present time.
Yeah, and it sounds like-
Because we're very fortunate to have what we have now.
The current ones we have, we have no problem with the way they're doing business, so that, I guess we just see no need to change the way they're doing business, because they're making it, and we don't have a problem with them.
And again, if, we need to change it later, I mean, ordinance has always been, we always change them, if there needs to be an amendment, we can amend it, but for the time being, we need to put something in place.
Council Chair.
Because there's nothing in place as of right now, and a lot of cities are actually going, so we have to be proactive and put an ordinance in place, as most cities in Michigan are doing right now.
Council Chair, there, thank you. There are various problems with this ordinance. At this point, what I would recommend, and I will point out some of the issues, is that this should end up pursuant to state law, namely the Zoning Enabling Act, being referred over to the Planning Commission for review, which is required, because essentially, this is an ordinance that has zoning implications. As a matter of fact, if you look at it, there's a reference at page 7 of 10 under section 871, to special land use for this type of application, which doesn't exist currently. There is a density requirement, which you would end up finding at section 864, which basically is at 3,500-foot radius. So these are the types of regulations that regulate location, they regulate land use. Before, they can end up basically being adopted, they have to go to the Planning Commission, Planning Commission ends up having to give a recommendation, and then this body has the opportunity to do this. And I, I felt that there might be this issue, and I just wanted to make sure that I felt comfortable with my general sense of things, so I spoke to Mark Roberts, who's the attorney from Seacrest Wardle, who basically handles our ZBA and Planning Commission matters, and he is very firm about the idea that it has to end up basically going to the Planning Commission. Specifically, he said, "Only after receiving the proposed amendment from the Planning Commission with its recommendation, may the city council consider the proposal." A land use ordinance is also subject to a petition, the challenge under the procedures contained in the Zoning Enabling Act. So essentially, this ordinance should not be adopted. It needs to go to the Planning Commission first and foremost to start, otherwise it's going to be invalid.
I guess I have a question then. How come you didn't tell us six months ago when this, the moratorium was put on? You've had six months to tell somebody on this council in regards to this, so we could have went that direction, because that, that was obvious where we were going anyways.
No, here, here's the thing. I usually only deal with things that are directed toward my attention, Council Chair, and as, as a matter of fact, in this situation, if I looked at the moratorium, and been asked to review the moratorium, I would have told you that the moratorium doesn't contain any sort of resolution language. It contains for where, whereas paragraphs, that really don't tell anyone that there is a moratorium. So when I am asked to look at something, or directed to do so, I'm more than happy to look at it. This did not happen in this situation.
Okay.
So it was brought to my attention, I've looked at it, I have to tell you that if you end up adopting this, doing a second reading, it's going to be subject to challenge. Plus, there are plenty of other issues, and I'll just be brief on these issues.
Okay. We're running over on our study session here, it's eight o'clock, so we can get it going, and then we're gonna end.
The issue of whether or not they should be handled as criminal violations as opposed to municipal civil infractions, which we have moved to municipal civil infractions, because we can actually get an order to stop something. The 35-foot location requirement is problematic and might be considered to be arbitrary, and is not likely to end up being upheld, given current law. is not likely to end up being upheld, given current law. The cap at seven raises antitrust issues, particularly where we only have seven right now. It almost looks like we're trying to lock in people to be able to give them that opportunity to end up having this type of business. There's a question about state preemption. Moreover, there are questions about even how this is supposed to end up applying. For example, I know that we ended up hearing that, you know, we're not going to have a problem with the existing businesses, but if you look at page five of 10, section eight, six, six, A, pre-existing businesses. "All smoking lounges operating pursuant to a valid certificate of occupancy for a smoking lounge on the effective date of this article are hereby granted a de facto temporary license to continue operating for a period of 180 days following the effective date. During this period, all smoking lounge businesses shall apply for a license pursuant to this article, and by the expiration date of 180 days, shall conform to all requirements for issuance of a license." So there's a difficulty, because really, it doesn't say what has been said. It essentially makes it sound like anyone who's in there right now could potentially end up losing their license. And I'd also note, in talking to Mr. Roberts, namely Mark Roberts, as opposed to Greg Roberts, Mark said, "Look, this ordinance looks remarkably similar to something that we had done for a township client." As a matter of fact, I know this particular ordinance has been kind of plagiarized by any number of different communities, and he said, "The problem is that it was done as a zoning ordinance when it was originally done, in order to make sure that there wasn't a problem." And that's why he said, "Look, you gotta, you gotta follow the requirements of the Zoning Enabling Act, this needs to go to the Planning Commission before, with a recommendation from them, and then, at that point, the city council could take a look at it." So that is my very strong recommendation to you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we have eight o'clock as our limit, I don't see any more.
This is the stopwatch, actually, I just want to.
Well, no, do you have a question?
Well, yeah, I think some, whoever is here, either from the residents, or possibly some of the business owners they currently are operating, if they'd like to, I think we should give public comments an opportunity, in my opinion.
We have the next agenda that we can actually.
Can we have public comment on the agenda?
There is an agenda item.
And they get two minutes there.
That's fine.
Madam Chair, a question for Councilor Miatki, what do you think the impact is of giving the whole decision over to the city council?
I think it raises issues under the Zoning Enabling Act as well, all depending on what we're looking at in terms of density requirements, that's why I think it should end up going over to the Planning Commission, those issues could end up being worked out, and hopefully the appropriate decision could be made. For example, there could be a special land use that ultimately ends up having to be decided on by the council as a body, but of course, right now, it says that there's supposed to be a special land use, makes reference to a special land use, but there's nothing in our zoning ordinance that has a special land use for this.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, we're going to end our study session, it's, we've ran a little over, and